Hello. Welcome to this Candidates Debate sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Marin County. I'm Susan Stomp for the League of Women Voters of Marin County, and also with us is Joan Brown, our timekeeper. The candidates with us today are running for a four-year term for three seats on the Marin Community College Board of Trustees. The candidates with us today are Brady Beavis, Diana Conti, Barbara Dolan, and Wondene Traynor. The candidates have been invited to make opening statements of two minutes. We're to begin with Brady Beavis, and then Diane, and then Barbara, and then Wondene. Now, this will be Brady's turn. Brady?
First, I want to thank the League Women Voters. Particularly in a race like this for College of Marin Board, a lot of people may not realize in the county, they're looking at the larger races, and they may think that the College of Marin Board is something that they're not going to spend as much time studying. In this particular race, with Marin County and the college being poised for all kinds of opportunity, and coming out of a rather dark period in their history, I think it's a very, very important race, and otherwise I wouldn't have even thrown my hat in the ring. So, I would, again, thank you, League Women Voters, and I'm hoping that the viewers are going to be able to make good decisions for the future of the college. I used to be on the Board of Supervisors for the College of Marin, I used to be on the Board of Supervisors for Marin County, and that's been a long time ago. And I thought I was over with politics. I'm telling you that this is an important race. I'm hoping that we can make valuable distinctions about the possible business, public-private partnerships that we have that could really grow the college, and I want to serve the people again in this, for this college, for the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brady. Now, it's Diana Conti's turn.
I'm Diana Conti, and I'm honored to have been Board President for two of my four years on the Board, and proud that working together with my fellow trustees and the college president, we have really achieved a significant turnaround for Calm and its thriving. The bond-funded programs are on track, working in collaboration with the community. We now have unconditional accreditation, and the number of degrees awarded jumped by 40 percent. We've implemented plans to pay off the unfunded liabilities and eliminate a structural deficit. Long-standing labor disputes have been resolved, and our new fundraising department has raised nearly $500,000 already. My future priorities include increasing fundraising, developing a long-term vision for the IVC campus, working closely with the Navajo community, and greater partnerships with businesses. We've made great progress, and we're on the right track, but we have a lot of multi-year plans that are, they're going to require us to stay really diligent and hard-working to keep them on track. I'm seeking reelection to come so that I can continue to make it even better, and I will continue to work effectively with all trustees. For more information on the issues and my endorsers, my website is contiforcollegeboard.com. And I'll just close by saying I am really excited about an even brighter future for Calm, and I ask for your vote.
Thank you, Diana. Now, it's Barbara Dolan's turn.
My name is Barbara Dolan, and I'm running for my eighth term. It has been such a pleasure to serve the people for the College of Marin, and I would like to continue on because of my extended knowledge and the fact that I represent five different student groups. Because I receive no financial interest money from any group, I do not accept donations, that leaves me free to represent whatever group I need to represent, and just serve the students and the people in Marin County. Those five groups that I have worked with and have served in this last seven terms are the less-abled or the ADA people, the seniors represented by our emeritus programs, transfer for further education students who wish to seek higher education, the English as a Second Language program, and the job-training workforce. These are five distinct, separate groups that should not be mingled together. We need to improve our mission statement and really figure out what the College of Marin is all about, and what we're going to do to serve those five different groups. Thank you for your support in the past, and I look forward to continuing to be a voice for those groups. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Wondene Traynor?
Hello. I'm Wondene Traynor, and I'm running for reelection to the College of Marin Board of Trustees. It is truly a privilege to serve as one of the trustees of our community college, College of Marin. I am excited about all that is happening at both of our campuses, IVC and Kenfield, and I am proud to be a part in providing leadership with a vibrant, vital, and dynamic public community institution as the College of Marin. A little bit about me, I have a long history in Marin, I have deep roots, and I'm a lifelong resident of Marin County. I am an attorney, practicing law in San Rafael for the past 28 years, and I have served in numerous capacities and leadership positions, including three terms on the Board of College of Marin, serving as president. I've also provided leadership in community and professional organizations, having served as president of Marin County Bar Association, 10,000 Degrees, formerly the Marin Education Fund, and Planned Parenthood of Marin Sonoma and Mendocino. I know that what it takes to be an effective community college trustee, and I understand it needs, we need to support student success, and we must maintain accreditation. It is also critical that we have a working knowledge of budgets, buildings, and bonds. I have those skills, and I have proven track record that I can make the difficult decisions. Regarding accreditation, I have spoken at several statewide conferences regarding the Board's role in accreditation. Regarding student success, I know that not every student wants to transfer to a four-year institution, but student success is about planning and supporting students in their roles. I look forward to the questions that will be asked today in the forum, and hope that I will have your support in this election to be reelected to the College of Marin Board of Trustees. Thank you.
Thank you, Wondene. Now, it's time for questions from the League. The candidates will have one and a half minutes to respond, and we'll start with Diane Conti. What is the mission of College of Marin, and is it changing, or do you think it should change?
Well, the mission is multi-pronged. We serve transfer students, we serve certificated students, so we're helping people get higher education, we're helping people get good jobs, and we're also helping lifelong learners. I think that there is more of a move to make sure that we're getting all of the transfer students in that we can, and to serve them in a way that they're having good student success, and you can see by the statistics that we're achieving that. We have a robust amount of career certification programs, and I would like to see us to continue to expand that with greater partnerships with businesses, to really find out what they're looking for in their new employees. And I think that we've served lifelong learners, I think that's important. At this point, I don't see that being in contradiction to serving the other populations, they're not taking away space from the other students. I like to think that we can keep that as a both-and, not an either-or, and get really creative about how to do that.
Thank you. Barbara?
Well, I enjoy answering this question, because that's one of the challenges. And I think these five different groups of students that I mentioned previously that we serve are very, very different, and with limited funding, we really do need to clarify what our mission is about. We have students from the very professional to those who do not have the knowledge of English and even basic skills, and I think the funding for that is something that can be very, very costly. We need to clarify specifically who should be attending the College of Marin, and what our mission statement is. I have worked in the past on mission statements, and I feel that we really, truly do need to upgrade what our mission is, and not just have a generic mission statement like we do that is trying to include all those groups. Thank you.
Thank you, Wondene.
Well, the mission drives all that we do, and the mission also is dictated in large part based on the education code. So, in terms of the students that Barbara Dolan was referring to, we have a duty and responsibility, first and foremost, to provide English as a Second Language, basic skills, transfer, and workforce development programs. It is indeed an opportunity that we can do in Marin County, is have lifelong learning, but our first priority needs to be those that have yet had the educational opportunities that everyone sitting at this table have had. And in speaking relative to the mission, it drives our strategic plan, it drives our education plan, as it should. And it's timely, the Board has already scheduled that we are going to be revisiting our mission, and we are going to make sure that it's current for the current needs, in the same way that we recently turned upside-down our priorities for enrollment, because we recognized that the high school students coming out of the local high school are not able to get the courses that they needed, and that was because the priority was with people who already had college credits. And by turning that upside-down and saying to the high school students, "We think you are our priority, and we're going to focus on you," many of them are coming to us with remedial skills needs, and we have them basic skills program for that purpose. So, it's an example of how what we do is driven by the mission that we have, and it's time to revisit it, and it's already on the Board's schedule to do so.
Thank you. Brady?
Yes. It seems like a community college is, to me, the most important player in serving the, not only education needs, but also lifelong learning needs, but also the one that I think needs to be addressed more adequately is the ability to get a job, the ability to transfer into a four-year school, a great four-year school, and the ability to enrich our lives and the community through lifelong and emeritus programs. Can, could actually, those are doing, it seems like those are doing better than they ever have, at least in the near, in the near past. However, what we haven't been addressing well enough, and especially in view of the IVC campus being underutilized, we haven't been addressing the ability to partner with businesses and build some really exciting programs that are actually income generating to the college in biotech, in clean energy. Right now, we have a wonderful program in organic gardening, we have one in cheesemaking, we have ones in nursing, but let's add some of the businesses of the future so our kids are prepared for the jobs that they need in the 21st century.
Thank you, Brady. The next question will be for Barbara Dolan to start with. Do you think the district has done what it promised the taxpayers it would do with the Measure C funds?
I think that many people did not expect a lot of the funds to be expended the way that they have, and I think there are a lot of concerns. I receive the calls from people who are upset and come to tell me about the issues that they're concerned with. Building more buildings at the Indian Valley Campus when we already have buildings that are not used. Why were those not simply remodeled and upgraded to make the standards appropriate for today's So, I do have concerns about the waste that is going on, the numerous change orders, just the way the operation is run. I think that there should be a very clear audit available to the public for what is going on, so that everybody is on board with what's happening. I think other districts have done that. I would suggest we look at one that Compton has done. It's a very simple procedure, it does not require elaborate, a lot of elaboration, but we should have regular audits, and they should be independent. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Wondene?
Well, thank you. We are fortunate to have had the support of the Marin County taxpayers when we passed Measure C in 2004, and I was honored to have served as the co-chair of the Measure C Countywide Facilities Bond Campaign. We are happy and proud to be able to say that we are on our final phase of that bond project, and that we have completed four new buildings, we have completely modernized three facilities, we have upgraded the computer systems, we have safe passageway, we have ADA compliance, it was something sorely needed because we were under consent decree at the time, and we have state-of-the-art facilities for our students to learn in the best environment possible. We are fortunate to have had the upgrades, also include environmentally sensible alternatives where we have solar panels and geothermal. So, yes, I can say that we have met the promise that we made to the taxpayers, and I feel it's important for me to run, because perhaps I'm the only Board member that was on at the time that remembers what we said we would do, and particularly in my role going around and campaigning to get the support. I have to comment on what Trustee Dolan just said. We do have audits, we have audits, and we have a citizens oversight committee. We have had clean reviews every time, and in fact, Trustee Dolan is the only trustee that did not vote for the bond. So, I don't hear anything but positive from the community about what we've done. The students are delighted, the faculty is in awe, particularly of our new math, science, nursing buildings. It is truly an honor to be part of that entire project, and I know we have met the requirements we set.
Thank you. Brady?
Yes. I've been very impressed by the new president, Dr. David Kuhn, and most of the Board has been working very, very positively with him. To follow up on what Wondene mentioned, the fact that we have a Board that's been trying to do a lot of very positive things is, has not been met with all of the Board, working together. I am the only non-incumbent that is running in this race. I'm doing so to actually replace Barbara Dolan on the Board. That is because I feel like we can't just be strong defenders of the status quo, and we can't just be looking at what the negative things are that we can do about our college. I know how to say yes. I know how to say yes to the future, I know how to say yes to what is needed, I know how to say yes to a languishing Indian Valley Campus, and I know how to say yes to the companies that are looking to us to supply the people that they need to put into their good, high-paying jobs here in Marin County, and I'm willing to talk to them. Thank you.
Diana?
The bond projects are coming in on time and on budget, and the facilities that Trustee Traynor has mentioned are all phenomenal facilities. They're green buildings, we're going to save money on the cost of utilities, because they are green buildings, they'll be long-term and sustainable, they're set up with smart classrooms, so they're really going to fit the technology needs of today's students. I think that early on with the bond project, there was disagreement about the priorities that were set, and the bottom line is, there was more need than money, so priorities had to be made, and there's been some disagreement about what they are. But going forward now, I'm pleased with what's happening, the campuses are looking great, the construction's going wonderfully with the new academic center. I think we regrouped, and we worked really closely with the community after not doing that as much as maybe we should have with the new academic center, so we came up with a design that worked for the students, worked for the college, and also worked for the neighbors and the local community, and was in keeping with the long-term vision of College Avenue. So, I am, I think we've done a good job. I think that there's going to be more that needs to be done, and we still have some deferred maintenance needs, but fortunately, we now have a facilities master plan, so we are now budgeting and addressing both deferred and ongoing maintenance needs of the remaining buildings.
Thank you, Diana. The next question, how effective do you think the college administration is? Is there anything you would like to improve? And Wondene Traynor will be the first person to respond to that.
That could be a really easy one, I'd just say extremely effective, and then let the next person answer. I, no, seriously, I have tremendous respect for Dr. David Wayne Kuhn, who is our president, and I think that he came in, he was the right person at the right time, and I think that's also true of his predecessor, she was the right person at the right time. Different needs at different times, and I think that's the beauty of the community college, that in the change of leadership and the Board's role and responsibility and hiring, and the CEO in particular, the superintendent, president, and the Board has done a very good job doing that, at least on my tenure. The current administration has really reached out to all the groups, and as Diana Conti mentioned, we have some peace in our negotiations. And I think that what has also happened is that he's a can-do person, he wants to be very positive, he wants a Board that is positive, and I think that the more that we can work well together and support him in his efforts, the longer he will stay, and I think that will be good for the community as a whole. There's also the issue that he has been able to bring in his own team, in his first year, he probably took on a lot of other people's administrators, and I think that he is feeling now that he has his team in place, and he is able to move forward and delegate and make decisions, and come to the Board with really creative ideas, and he's reaching out to the community for additional ideas, and I'm extremely happy with what he's doing.
Thank you. Brady?
Yes, I also believe that Dr. Kuhn is doing a fabulous job, he is a great diplomat, a great bridge builder, he's been working with the community, with businesses, with faculty. What he's done to help bring the faculty out of their dispute culture and into a collaborative culture has been really impressive. I think that what he needs now is not only the rest of the faculty working with him and the employees of the College of Marin, but also more, not only engagement of the students, because they were remarkably kind of cut out of some of the processes, but he needs an engine to keep this moving forward and modernize some of these courses, modernize not just the campus, the buildings in which they're teaching, but the course offerings and the very way that we actively participate in the community with, and inform people more of what's going on. The fact that he doesn't have a Board that historically has been able to agree on things and help give him ideas and go out into the community and be able to work with people, because it's been having to deal with its own divisiveness in the past, I don't think, I think I can go ahead and help build that collaboration. I want to be able to help move the college forward, and I'm hoping that you can, I can have your vote for that purpose.
Thank you. Diana?
Well, I really agree with all of what's been said. I think the administration has done an excellent job. It's the keystone for creating the turnaround that we've had. As people have said, David is responsive to the community, he works very well with the faculty, so he listens, he's responsive, he's smart about it, he's also a very pragmatic and smart manager. And when, you know, often when you have to administer a very large organization, you have priority, you have competing needs, and you have to get creative in what you do about that, and he's very good at doing that. You dig down into the details, and you sort through it, and you find the win-win solutions. You say no once in a while when you have to, but you find ways to make it up however you can if you have to take something away, and I think he's done an excellent, excellent job in that. With the morale on the campuses better, I think it has helped him to be able to bring in his own team, and so administration's getting even stronger. And the only thing I could think of that would be an improvement is to find a way to clone him.
Thank you, Diane. Barbara?
Well, Dr. David Wayne Kuhn is certainly a diplomat, and I do respect his ability to reconcile differences between some of the groups. But I also represent a group of those students who are not necessarily getting their needs met, and that's why I said we really need to clarify those five student groups, and I would love to see Dr. Kuhn specify specifically what dollars, what courses and classes are going to be going to each one of those groups, because right now, it's a big question mark. I would also like to see the wall between administration and the community come down more than it has. Over the years, I have watched meetings that were robustly attended by the community dwindle to almost nobody there, maybe a handful from the community. And that happens when community members feel that they are not being heard or listened to, and that is something that I would like to see improved upon. I am a former student, graduate there myself, I played for their tennis team competitively, and that college is a wonderful, both campuses are a wonderful asset to this county, and we need to keep that strong, vibrant, robust vitality going. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will be answered by Brady first, and does the college have enough students, or does it need to increase enrollment?
It's not just the enrollment per se. This is what they call a basic aid district, which means that you don't get an extra dollar from the state in subsidy for every student that comes there. However, there is additional revenue from the workforce development, from the vocational classes, from the classes that ADA, from people who need to have some extra subsidy because there is a little extra equipment and all going into their, their needs. That's one way of producing revenue. One of the things in a basic aid district is that the College of Marin is basically, without the state subsidies, is basically a $45 million business. And as such, why doesn't it have a long-term strategic plan other than the one that just came through from Dr. Kuhn for three years? I think we need to have a long-term strategic plan, we need to have goals and objectives that include the IVC campus, we need to have ways of generating revenue, because we can't keep going back to the taxpayers.
Thank you, Brady. Diana?
Well, I do need to correct something that you just said, Brady. We actually have a variety of long-term strategic plans, so they are in place and they are being implemented. And as you mentioned, with enrollment, it's a little tricky, because we're basic aid, so if we get more students, we don't get more money. However, it is our charge to provide the greatest amount of education for the greatest amount of people possible. So, we always want to be able to serve people and address the need in Marin to the greatest extent possible. I think, and we've had a little bit of dip in enrollment, but that's a lot, that's due to three things. One is that the fees have gone up, they've more than doubled, from $20 a unit to $46 a unit. We went from 20% of students receiving reduced fee assistance through the Fair Deal Guidelines to 80%, but they, the guidelines have changed so that people have less ability to qualify for it if their grade point average doesn't reach a certain level. So, it's, it's put a strain on those students, and we've also had to reduce the number of courses offered, and that's part of keeping ourselves on budget. So, I think that we need to continue to stay on top of having the relevant courses we need for the students, continue outreach to the community, find out what the greatest needs are, that we factor that into all of our educational planning.
Thank you. Barbara?
Well, I certainly do agree that there are problems for a student with the fees being increased and the course reduction. That's why I mentioned earlier that we need to really target- That's why I mentioned earlier that we need to really target what our mission is about and specify specifically how those students in the five different student groups can get through the programs that, and their needs are met. It's an interesting dichotomy here. It's our local taxes that pay, but yet we cannot, or do we have any authority or ability to tap into the state, federal funding that is behind so much of the programs that we talk about getting into? So you paid generously for our Measure C bond, and that's what I would like to see meet the needs of our local students who want to go to the College of Marin. And I think it's pretty hard to serve a broad base throughout the country, throughout the nation, throughout the world. And we need to look at those funding resources and the students that we serve. What about Marin students that live here? Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Juan Dean?
Well, it's an interesting question as far as, you know, do we need more students, I think is at the core. And first and foremost, I think that if we look at IVC was built pre-Prop 13, and there were projections at that time that every municipality in the county was going to grow population-wise considerably greater than it has. And because of the no growth and all of the various jurisdictions that has happened since IVC was initially purchased, it significantly impacted the number of students that were projected for the future for College of Marin. Having said that, we have done an excellent job adjusting with the ebb and flow of enrollment, and due to what other trustees, trustees and candidates have said regarding what we, it was a strategic decision. We would either have to have laid off faculty and staff, or we would have cut classes. And we felt it was important, it was an opportunity to right-size our course offerings, and we did that. And it's well-planned, and it's thought out, and we thought indeed there would be some dip in enrollment. But having said that, as others have mentioned, the increase in tuition is a significant factor. And I think what's really also an important factor that was mentioned is our tax base and the fact we're basic aid. And it's been mentioned we need to do more fundraising, because many homes are in Prop 13 housing, and they are not paying what it takes for us to run the College of Marin, and that's a candid, honest assessment of the situation. And as a result, we need to reach out in other ways in order to be able to provide the courses that people may want and attract more students.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Diana. And would you comment on the issue of the College of Marin Foundation for student scholarships? Since there was a scandal and it came to a bad end, should it be restored and functioning again?
So first, I want to clarify that the scholarships are still continuing. The funds that remained intact were the endowed funds that provided the scholarships, and those will continue to be distributed, and those are protected. And those are important. As to what the future looks like, the process that we're in right now is, it's requiring an ongoing review by the State Attorney General's Office. So the actual course of the future can't be determined until that review is completed. And there's two things that need to happen. One is, there's no money left to operate what was currently, what was previously the foundation. So then we have to figure out what do we do from here with the 3.8 million in assets, and that, we can't really decide that until we get the Attorney General's review and get some details clarified. But then, what it looks like going forward, obviously, the college needs a robust fundraising arm. Its internal department is doing very well. But what it does after that is really to be decided by the full Board of Trustees. So it could create another 501(c)(3), it could create an auxiliary, or it could just continue with an internal department. We're looking at all those details. My own personal opinion is that I don't think it would be wise to have another separate 501(c)(3). I think the internal department is doing very well, and I think we need to, as we dive down into the details, we need to assess whether it's going to give us more to be able to create an auxiliary.
Thank you, Barbara.
Again, this is something that I think really needs a clear audit, as I mentioned previously, and I think we need an independent audit that is clearly going to be open with the public, simply stating what the facts are and what has happened. With the dissolution of the foundation, the college now is in control of $4.2 million. I think we need to be very clear if people are going to donate specifically what their funds are going to go for. And so far, that has not happened. We need that audit, and I think we have good, independent auditors who could clarify exactly what needs to be done. Our students have benefited, not only from the scholarships, but programs in the district have also been on the receiving end of foundation monies in the past. So there are many, many students in this county and who are very, very grateful for the scholarships that they received, as well as department heads for the funds that they have received from the foundation in the past. Thank you. And let's have that audit independently.
Juan Dean?
Well, it's unfortunate, I have to begin by clarifying, but the previous comments by Barbara Dolan are not accurate, and it's unfortunate. And I would suggest that people go to the College of Marin's website, and you will see that there was a full audit. Everything is clarified, everything is transparent, and it's important that we speak with honesty and with the truth, particularly around a public institution as important as the College of Marin, and to have a candidate misstating the facts is most unfortunate. I really want to be positive. The opportunities are clear, and as Diana Conti mentioned, we have a robust fundraising office. When I was co-chairing the Measure C campaign in 2004, the board at that time created naming policies, because we intended that we would have naming opportunities for our buildings, for our lockers, for the chairs, everything. When you go to any private university, you see there are so many opportunities. College of Marin has all of them, and particularly with four new buildings and three modernized facilities. We have tremendous opportunities to raise additional funds that will support instructional equipment and eventually bring people to be connected to the college to support our programs. That's the vision the board had. Unfortunately, members of the College of Marin Foundation Board were threatened, perhaps, but our board was diligent in asking the right questions, following through, and making sure that the endowed funds that have been mentioned have been preserved and are preserved. As far as going forward, I think the experience of having a separate 501(c)(3) was a bit of a challenge, and the board needs to be able to make sure we receive and collect the funds we need.
Thank you. Brady?
Yes, since I wasn't on that watch during the time that the foundation mishandled the funds, and I trust that it is going the right direction, and apparently so do the people in Marin County, because they've contributed almost half a million dollars so far in additional donations to the campus. I would like to use this time instead then to stress that the community college has a special charge. It has the charge to serve everyone in Marin County who wants to get an education. It needs to be a top education. It needs to be a transferable. You have to be confident it comes from an accredited school. Two, they need to be able to enrich their lives through courses they can take and current events, like the one that went on yesterday at the IVC campus, and others that the Meritas program offers. And three, and this is where I come out in particular that is lacking, is sufficient and timely skills training. The fiscally sound and competitive college is also absolutely necessary. Why is it people in Marin, young people in Marin County are going to Sonoma State, the Santa Rosa JC, which has such a fine reputation? We should be drawing from those other counties around us who want to have some of those specific skill training for our businesses here that are unique and forward-thinking.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Barbara Dolan. Do you anticipate any issues for the College of Marin with regard to the accreditation with the accounting, accrediting commission for community and junior colleges?
That currently is a challenge for community colleges, and we've heard what's happened to City College in San Francisco. And I love it that I can be independent, because I can now go and tell our academic senate president I totally supported their role in opposing the shutdown of City College by the accreditation process. This is something that colleges always have had to deal with in the past, but they have never had it at the forefront to the degree that it has been these last few years. And yes, I think we are going to continue to struggle to try to meet the mandates of the accreditation as required legally, and that's a serious issue.
Thank you. Juan Dean?
Again, I feel like I got to correct, for the sake of City College. City College hasn't been shut down. And the issue relative to the Western Association of Schools and Colleges, the accreditation process is rigorous, it's important, and it's necessary, but it's peers. Peers looking at each other and seeing how we're doing in comparison to each other, and what are best practices, and whether or not we are conducting our institutions under best practices. As I mentioned in the introduction, I have spoken at statewide conferences relative to the board's role in accreditation, and it's really important that the board understands that we are leadership over all of it, not just how the board conducts and operates its own business and enforces its own policies, but also to the fact that we need to make sure there's a current technology plan, that there's a current strategic plan. And our board did that. We did that last year in preparation of our midterm report. But on top of that, we have a responsibility to make sure that we're staying on top of it. And it's one of the issues that the board in our self-evaluation said we needed to make sure that the promises we made as far as the technology plan takes money, and where's the money going to come from? And so that's part of the challenge that City College and other institutions had, because their boards were not forthright in looking forward to the future. We have had a five-year budget plan to look at, to see what we can do. When we made promises in any of our plans that had a dollar amount to it, we had to put some certainty as to when we would be looking back to see if we could achieve it, because the issue really is, can you be wise in your business operations?
Thank you. Brady?
Yes, I, again, I'm not an incumbent, and I didn't participate in either the creation or the attempts at solutions for the accreditation problem. What I understand is that Dr. David Kuhn, through his wise discretion about offering early retirements to faculty and all, has really helped us in many, many ways. And part of that is that the accreditation problems were not due to academics. They were due to, we were still doing fine on the academics. We were completely adequate and beyond adequate, superlative. But when it came to the way that apparently some of the faculty and equipment was subpar, then that was part of what it was based on, and that is being fixed rapidly. So I think it's still an incredibly good opportunity. It's a great college, and I'm hoping that we can do more recruitment out in the schools and be able to actually have the future be able to be much brighter.
Thank you. Diana?
Well, I think we are on track to make sure that we stay compliant with everything that's required for accreditation. I have every confidence that that's not going to be an issue in the future, but we will have a lot of work to do. There are many, in many areas, we have multi-year plans that have to be implemented. We're going to have to stay on top of that. We're going to have to find the resources for that. There's resource implications and policy implications in many areas. The board in the last year, when we went through our own self-study for the accreditation, we reviewed every single master plan. And we talked about the resource allocations and the policy allocation, so we're well-informed with what it's going to take. And it's going to be a campus-wide effort involving faculty, staff, administrators, and the board to make sure that we stay doing that. But these, it's a good thing. It's not just for accreditation. This is what's going to make the college stronger.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Juan Dean. Recognizing the adoption of the Student Success Initiative, how is College of Marin responding to the initiative and meeting the needs of its students?
Well, as I said in my opening, it is a board's roles and responsibilities to understand student success, and that student success is really about planning, and it's about having all of our students, whether it's in workforce development, or they're transferring to another institution, or they're there for basic skills or ESL, that they are there with a plan in place, and that we help them have a plan. And that with the plan, they have goals, and they can understand which courses they need to have, and the board has invested by allocating resources to have a new program in place that will track the students, the courses they're taking, and keeping them currently with involvement with counselors, to make sure that when they start to go off track, we can help them come back on track. I also mentioned that we changed the priority for enrollment, and that was a critical shift. Allowing people that had 150 units to take a class before someone who was just starting really wasn't responsible, and yet it was what was always done throughout the state. Student Success Initiative brought this to the forefront and said we need to be looking at where we're putting our priorities for enrollment, and the College of Marin responded appropriately. Our new vice president in Academic Affairs has done an exemplary job, understands what needs to be done, and I'm proud of the work that we have done so far on student success. And indeed, there's, it's an ongoing job. It's not something that the board can just say, "We did it." We need to monitor it. There needs to be quarterly, semi-annual, and annual reviews. It's about completion. It's about results. It's about success, and that's what we hope to be able to master.
Thank you. Brady?
Listen, part of it, at the convocation that Dr. Kuhn had, it was really wonderful to see the actual faces of students and faculties working together and finding out that the overall conclusion that the consultant came up with was that College of Marin, the faculty, the people who looked at the intervening with students who really needed the help, finding them in time, being able to see if they needed ESL skills or additional tutoring, was all about the fact that they care. Showing that they care made a tremendous difference, and something as small as when you're walking around the campus and someone looks like they're lost, the fact that they can actually come up to them and say, you know, "Can I help you?" Or go up to a student that looks like they're floundering and be able to say, "How can we help you?" Student success is not just an overall policy, but as they were pointing out, it's a one student at a time, recognizing who needs the help, paying attention to them, listening to their questions, and finding out who needs the help so that everyone can succeed who attends the college.
Thank you, Brady. Diana?
Well, I think as a result of the Student Success Initiatives, which have taken a great deal of hard work to get implemented, I think we've seen the evidence that it's working very well. We have, the number of degrees awarded jumped by 40%, certificates by 33%, and overall graduations by 34%. We've seen some really exciting work being done by the faculty, which is, it's a much more individualized approach to make sure students have the guidance they need to stay on the course that's really going to allow them to have the kind of success that they want. Again, it's good, it can get even better. We keep, we need to keep it on track and keep moving in a bigger way. It's been a very good thing for the college, and I think a very good thing for students.
Thank you. Barbara?
The education that I received at the College of Marin probably is not possible today. Forty-three of our faculty retired or is leaving the college. And specifically, the people in Marin County have different needs, and the expectations here are different than any other county in the state of California. We are unique. We have many challenges, because we have an older population, basically, that started out attending, that enjoys attending the lifelong learning classes. We have five very distinct student groups, and that's why I've said we really need to specify meeting the needs of those groups. It can be very, very costly when we are so broad-based that we are including the number that we have right now, and that's why we need to target specifically what the mission of this college district is and tailor those needs to meet students in Marin County first.
Thank you. That ends the questions. Before the candidates make their closing statements, I would like to give you some important dates. The election day is on Tuesday, November 5th. The last day to register to vote is October 22nd, two weeks before the election, or if you need to re-register if you've moved since you last voted. Requests for absentee ballots must be received by the Elections Department by October 28th, one week before the election. Early voting opens at the Civic Center, room 121, on October 7th. If you go to the leagessmartvoter.org website and enter your street address and your zip code, you will be able to see your own ballot with links to the candidates, issues, ballot measures, and information about the voting process itself. In addition, our website, marinlwv.org, has many other online resources for voters to research facts and campaign financial information. Now, the candidates will be making closing statements of one and a half minutes, and we'll go in reverse order, starting with Juan Dean. we'll go in reverse order, starting with Wondene.
Okay. Well, I'll begin by saying thank you to the League and to the Community Media Center for this opportunity for us to be able to reach out to the Marin voters. And I will reiterate, it's truly a privilege to serve on the Board of Trustees for the College of Marin. It's an exciting place. Lives change at this institution, and it's a public institution. It's for all of us. And I think that if I were to look at what I could do to make a difference, I have found that I have made a difference in my time serving on the Board of College of Marin, and I am proud of what we've been able to accomplish. I think that our institution's facilities speak for the change that has gone on at the College of Marin. When you go to IVC, there is a there there. You know you're on a college campus when you pull up to the college instead of having us off in clusters off the street. College of Marin, as I said when I ran around the county to support Measure C, I said, "When you get to the College of Marin, you're going to know you're there." It's not going to be turn left at Taqueria. It's going to be turn left at the College of Marin, and we're about to see that. It's an exciting time for the college. We are responsible stewards. The board, contrary to some who have said otherwise, I think the board is working well. We support the president. I welcome the opportunity to add Brady Beavis to the board because I think we need a can-do, must-do attitude to support our current president. Time is up for us to be able to say that what we've done is okay. We need to be creative, visionary, and I am one who has done that in the past in other organizations and with the college, and I hope to continue doing it. I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara?
I think it's important that the voter hears two sides, at least, of an issue. I am not a clone. I am independent. I have a lifetime teaching credential. I have a master's in library science, and I previously worked in founding an executive search firm, BMI, that was down at Larkspur Landing for many years. And I love the job and what I am doing. It's been a pleasure to serve you, the people, and the students in this county. The college is a super wonderful asset, and my trips to Indian Valley have not been swayed in favor of one campus or going just to the Kenfield campus because I am independent. And I think it is important to have people who can present another side of the issue and not just go along with the flow. Thank you very much for your support. In my last seven terms, I have enjoyed speaking about the college throughout the state and also at a national level. So thank you again. I seek your support to remain an independent member on this board.
Thank you, Barbara.
And thank you, League, for having us.
Diana?
Bottom line is, we've made good progress, and we need to be diligent to keep it on track. There's always more to do to make sure all of our students get what they need. I'm proud of what we've all done together, and I'd like to continue on the board, to continue to help make Calm even better. I think voters have four good candidates to choose from. I think that there are varying perspectives that they can choose from. I hope to be one of those choices. I have a proven track record. I work well with all trustees in the community, and I will continue to draw from my 30 years' experience as a nonprofit CEO. It's been a privilege to serve on the board. I am thrilled with the progress that Calm is making. It's thriving, and we can make it even better. And I promise to continue to work hard. I really, really look forward to a bright future for the College of Marin, and I ask for your vote.
Thank you. Brady?
I believe I have the qualifications to actually take us into the future because what I was doing after I left the Board of Supervisors, the Marin County Board of Supervisors, was working in workforce development, building public-private partnerships between private businesses and community colleges all through the state. I worked first for the multimedia industry through the Bay Area Economic Forum. They recruited me to go ahead and put in a world-class website and connection and four books for community college instructors. And that came from talking to community college instructors first and businesses second, and then turning that around and making sure that they were linked up, hooked up, and they were excited. And it changed things. It helped keep the multimedia and high-tech and digital industries here, like Pixar and ILM, who are on the Board of Directors. It helped keep them here in the Bay Area. After that, I worked for the Employment Development Department and the Department of Labor, doing the same thing throughout California for different industries. We can do that kind of thing here in addition to offering excellent academics here at College of Marin. This can be stellar. I want to be part of that. I want to be part of the 21st century with the college, and I'm excited about it.
Thank you, Brady. And thank you to all of the candidates for being here and sharing your thoughts and ideas, and to our timekeeper, Joan Brown. And thank you for watching.